Very good. Thank you. This is Wednesday, September 27. It is 10:35. Your Clark County Council has completed a very informative work session on legacy lands, following our Board of Health meeting as well. So now we begin our council time. And we have a somewhat lengthy agenda on that. And so we shall begin. We begin with -- Yes, go ahead.
Excuse me, Chair Barman. Thank you. Sorry for the interruption. This is Leslie Lopez. I do have an amendment to make to the agenda.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to add one executive session for pending litigation for 15 minutes under RCW 4230-110, subsection 1, subsection I. And there's no after action.
4230-110?
4230-110 1I. And it's pending litigation.
Yes, thank you. And you said for how many minutes? I'm sorry.
That's okay. 15 minutes.
15, okay. Excellent. Thank you. Any other changes to the agenda or edits?
Yeah, the only other one is just based on your prior discussion is amending to add 5.5 under work session requests regarding a sidewalk program update.
Yes, and I also added there 5.6 for the conservation evenings on farmland. Would that not be a work session?
We can look at council time or work session. I will say our work session time is getting booked, so we may need to start looking at other dates as well.
So shall we take it off of work session? Well, take it off. Shall we not put it on work session then?
Yeah, I would suggest we just include it on a council time agenda.
Okay. Not a problem, as long as it gets discussed. Any other changes?
Just a quick clarification question. I was curious in the process of how we got to the 5.5 or workshop on the sidewalks?
It was asked by council in the work session this morning to have an update on the sidewalk program. Actually, it was during the Board of Health meeting, and the chair mentioned about adding it as 5.5.
Okay, so there were two councillors that requested.
Well, the chair.
I think in the discussion, the majority of the council supported the discussion. But I think the chair suggested to put it on as an amendment on 5.5. So that's why I'm asking the council to amend to add that to 5.5.
Okay, yeah, I'm certainly supportive of it. I just want to be clear on our process and how we're doing, you know, additions and adding things to meetings. What was that, Chair?
Do you have your answer?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, very good. Then let's begin the meeting. And let's start with public comment. And this time, the public comment is to be on the agenda items that are on council time's agenda today. That does not include the work session, by the way. Is there anyone, staff? In the council room or online who wishes to comment?
Yes, staff, we do have someone in the room here and a hand or two online.
Very good.
My name is Kimberly Goheen Elban. I'm a citizen of Clark County, Washington. I'll be speaking on your minutes that you're going to be passing. A year ago, I mentioned the roads and sidewalks outside this building right here. It's been over a year ago, and they've been that way for at least five years. I just spoke to a homeless person today, actually. And he said that his walker almost fell. And I said, well, at our stage of life, we don't want to have any problems with tripping or anything. And I sure as hell hope I don't trip out there when I leave to go to my car. I mentioned it a year ago. So where's all that money? I mean, you guys have had the money. Why isn't something done? And that's my cause here, that you're funneling all these millions of dollars stating what you're going to do. And it just, well, as we've stated here numerous times, just kind of went away. We spent a lot of money for years, and then it kind of just fell apart, spending our hard-earned tax dollars. People need to wake up. So I do want to mention about the jail that I resent. Our sheriff's department is governed by an unelected official. In fact, our jails and sheriffs are governed by unelected county manager Kathleen Otto. I find that disturbing, as it is on record, that there will be another pandemic. The first pandemic is also known as a plannedemic and follow -- and this includes taking our jail system. So this is very deep. It's been called the swamp. But our police and who -- and so when you take our jail system and our police and make them comply, who are they going to follow during this pandemic? Are they going to follow the government? Or are they going to follow the people? They're going to protect us? I sure hope so. Everyone I talk to, and there's plenty, I ask them to serve the people. And I see their heart that they will. Long your minutes, you mentioned the 4H. I want to read what 4H is. The first H in 4H stands for head clearer thinking. One of the key concepts in 4H is education, allowing youth to have the opportunity to learn new things through projects and programs. I also was a 4H member here when I was a child here at Vancouver. 4H allows youth to be actively engaged in their own learning. In addition, 4H makes youth participants rather than recipients. And that's what I want to talk to the people about. We are the boss. They do what they want. And it's not that way. We need to wake up. The second H stands for heart. Heart is heart to greater loyalty. I'll read the next H. Stands for hands. Hands for larger service. Wouldn't that be nice that our children are going to serve God, family, and country? As I was -- I took a note down here at the Vancouver barracks when I was 18 years old. So that's what I did. And the last H stands for health.
Chang for speaking in the hearing. Three-minute public comment has expired. Are there others who wish to speak?
Yes, Chair. Heather, online, please go ahead with your comment.
My name is Heather Tischbein. I live in the Salmon Creek area. As an early childhood educator by profession and a local organic food activist by avocation and as part of my commitment to the well-being of our children, I just want to say in response to the Board of Health meeting this morning and the Legacy Lands conversation.
I'm sorry, this is public comment on our agenda item for council time. Do you have anything you'd like to contribute on those topics?
No, but I do want to just say that the previous two hours have been a breath of fresh air and a pleasure as a citizen. So I have other things I could say that I won't say. But thank you, because what I listened to was an opportunity for innovation and genuine connecting the dots around the importance of local foods and public health and ag land preservation. And it's really a joy to see this county council beginning to have this kind of a conversation, especially as it will pertain to our comp plan update. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for those comments. And now we move to another person who may wish to speak on the council time agenda.
That looks like everyone, Chair.
Okay, very good. Old Business. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of September 20?
Motion to approve, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is passed. Draft of the unlawful camping ordinance. Kathleen, is this one that you're going to present? Or Amber, are you up?
I'll hand it over to Amber, who will introduce the topic.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everyone. I have Commander Todd Barsness here with me in the audience, who's going to be presenting this alongside. We have a lot of partners that have worked on this, but it's a joint partnership between our office and CCSO to get this in front of you today. And it's been a long time coming. I know we've talked about this for many years. So I am going to pass this to Commander Barsness, and then I will add some things at the end of that.
Good morning, council. It's my understanding that the council has received a copy of this draft ordinance. I understand your time is valuable. I'm not going to go bullet point by bullet point through this ordinance. I think it is very important to recognize, as Amber said, this was a collaborative effort. And I would personally like to acknowledge the work that Amber and Leslie Lopez have put into this project. It's significant and has gotten us where we are today. From the sheriff's perspective, I think it's very important that we recognize that this is a tool for us to help the public receive services. We do not see this primarily as an enforcement tool. We see this as a path to getting our public the assistance and the help that they need and that they deserve. There is an enforcement component to this. That enforcement component would be a last-ditch effort on the part of the sheriff's office, because I can tell you from personal experience that citing somebody into court, making a custodial arrest of someone in these situations does not solve the problem. It prolongs the problem, and it simply delays the problem. I see this as a solution to steering the public, who in, for a variety of different reasons, in many situations, is resistant to services. This gives us the ability to direct them to those services, creating partnerships with advocacy group and services that are available to the public. Again, I'm not going to go through this point by point, but I am here to answer any questions or take any comments or feedback that the council would have at this time.
Chair, if I may add something real quick to Commander Barsness. As it's written in the ordinance, it talks heavily about our community court that we have, that we're lucky to have in our county. And the city primarily uses that right now. So this would be an avenue for the county to also use that, which, as Commander Barsness is saying, gets the folks in that path of services. It gives it another option and connection to the community. And it's a good avenue for us to have in this particular situation.
Chair, I have a few questions.
Go ahead, councilor.
Thank you very much. Thank you for providing that context, because I, you know, when I look at these things, I think of, well, what if I'm in that position? How would that be for me? And as I read the Columbian, you know, my cohort is increasing in the number of people who are homeless. And so as this is a tool to help people get services, is it -- I'm just wondering, why can't that helping people get services? Why is that not something that's possible now without this tool?
It's a very good question, and thank you for asking that. The short answer is, it is possible. But I can tell you, again, in my personal experience, for a variety of different reasons, this population, from time to time, can be resistant to accepting help. Either they've had negative experiences in the past or they're -- they have trust issues when it comes to authority figures, law enforcement in general. So our efforts to create this kind of outreach is limited by the fact that there is no enforcement component at the very end of that path. So without that, we are very, very limited as law enforcement in the types of contacts and services that we can actually be offering based off state statute.
Thank you. And in this scenario, and I understand about the resistance, that it makes it very difficult. In the scenario where there are no beds available, what happens then?
Well, as the statute, or I'm sorry, as the ordinance states, there would be no enforcement component in that scenario for enforcing the overnight camping portion of this ordinance. In those scenarios, we would still have the ability to refer them to support groups and services that are available.
And if they refused that, would they just, would you just ask them to move on? Would they just have to move on and find another place on their own to camp? Is that the likely scenario?
Yes.
Okay. And I was --
Councilperson Marshall?
Yes, thank you.
Can I add something to that? So as Commander Barsness is discussing, this is really a parallel to what Vancouver's processes with the Hart team. There is an enforcement component to that. This gives the ability for CCSO to do the same on our county properties. So it's a very parallel process. We've built that very similar so that we could have the same. I know we've talked about that numerous times. The councillor Young's brought that up with a similar process and also councillor Meveji. So this is a parallel kind of process of what the city is doing as well. But it's a tool for our officers for the county.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that. And I think it's important that we are consistent with what the city of Vancouver is doing. And then if there is a -- if they are cited and receive a misdemeanor, is that something that would go on their record? Would there be any jeopardy in terms of finding future employment? If they -- I'm not sure how that works.
If they are charged with a crime, then yes, that would go on their record. However, it's my understanding the community court system is built around creating opportunities, not trying to limit those opportunities. So there are ways through to a variety of different programs where they can receive services and help in lieu of having a criminal conviction or in lieu of being sentenced to jail time. Again, the goal is to provide short and long-term help, not necessarily jail time.
Councilperson Marshall, I was part of the first origination of the community court that we were trying to establish in our county that's now established. And the goal is, you have a community service component. So we have a work crew that comes and picks up folks. So that's a community service aspect. It's worked through with the lawyers. So we have defense and prosecution for both city and state that's there as representatives. They work through that. And then that is a diversion, if you will, from that going on their record. So there is, you know, we have folks, FTA. We have failure to appear. Folks sometimes don't come to community court. But they've had a really great success rate. They've talked to us in Law &amp; Justice about their numbers and the success that they're having. So we're seeing good forward progress with our community court.
Great. And so it would be a rare instance indeed if there was anyone that actually received a misdemeanor or something put on their record. Again, it would be diverting them into assistance.
They're trying to work with folks. They understand, and that's what that court is built around, is connection with services and outreach.
Great, thank you. Because I think a compassionate approach, it sounds like that's something that we can all agree on. So thanks very much for your work on this.
I have just a couple of comments. One of them is, would you please describe, and this may be an Amber question, I'm not sure, the signage that will accompany the implementation of this ordinance is obviously critical, that those affected by the ordinance know that it is in place. And since the newspaper or whatever may or may not be the best source for their picking up that knowledge, signage is extremely important. And I know you have some things planned there. What is planned?
Thank you, Chair. After we go through the public hearing process, and this is adopted, we will create the signage, Mike Lewis and facilities. And we're going to work with the sheriff's office of where the Beck's placement of those signs are, will they make the most impact? And so we will be talking about that in the upcoming weeks after we go through the public hearing process. But that is something that we've been talking about, where that would make the most impact across our campuses.
Very important, thank you. And my second comment deals with your item 9.06.080 on unlawful fire. This is page six of the ordinance, I believe, if you wish to turn to that. And one of the statements is there. It's on down, if you want to go on down just a little bit to where the heading says unlawful fire. Yes, thank you. Except as otherwise provided within this chapter, it shall be unlawful for any person to start or maintain any fire for the purposes of burning any combustible material in or around the campsite. Now, the campsite may or may not include, say, for example, parking garages that our staff and sometimes the public use. And we have had instances where there has been a fire started in the parking garage. And that, I don't know if that is called the campsite or not. It probably isn't, because the campsite is maybe located just a ways away. And so I guess that's a comment that I have kind of a concern. My question is, if they start a fire such as that, is the punishment or the response by the county the same as what is described in the rest of the ordinance?
Based off the ordinance, and the verbiage in the ordinance is specific to campfires that would be around a cooking or a campsite. There are other statutes, reckless burning or arson, depending on the exact scenario, that could apply to someone who is building a fire or maintaining a fire outside of a designated or recognized camping area.
So there may be other situations where there is a companion piece of legislation, I'm going to call it, that would be called into play for some of the very topics that appear to be addressed here. But this is referring to the campsite directly. So that is good to know. Other questions from council or comments?
Yeah, so I more have comments than questions. But the other saving that we've been working on this for a long time, I mean, yes, we have. The entire tenure of my councilship. And so I appreciate that we're finally making this proactive step. And as to the chair, you know, there are statutes in existence, state law, every state, vandalism, arson, a different variety, whether felonies or misdemeanors, that this will not overturn or it's just supplemental to what's oriented existence in the law. And as a councillor Marshall, if you want to spend some time, I'm happy to bring you up to speed on all of the efforts that are going on in the county, from the community court, which is seeing great success. We have collaborative courts here in every topic, from veterans to drug use to mental health, deferred entry of judgment. We, society does its best to prohibit people from having convictions on their record now, whether felonies or misdemeanors. They basically earn the right to have the case dismissed with compliance, whether it's drug treatment, mental health treatment, giving back to the community, restorative justice. There are so many programs, and this county is doing a good job of implementing each and every one of them. That focus won't change. We have pilot programs going on right now with the sheriff's department on a co-responder program. It's already in progress, but not much further along in Vancouver on mental health issues. We had, I think, that presentation from C Mar not too long ago. We need to expand on that. The Hart team, we're looking to partner with the sheriff. And I've had really good discussions with the current sheriff on, you know, having a heart-like response as well. You know, we need law enforcement for security on all those contacts, because any contact can turn dangerous instantly, whether it's a motor vehicle stop or in an emergency room or out on the street in front of this building. You know, you can't just have a social worker walk up because you don't know what's going to happen. But all those programs are moving forward and in place. But the end of the day is, we need rule of law. We need civil society to be able to enforce its rules. And it's not just sleeping on the sidewalk. It's usually injecting drugs on the sidewalk, public exposure, public defecation, vandalism, littering. All those things go along with unlawful camping. So we need to address that. I mean, I just saw the New Wall Street Journal, I think yesterday, the mayor of San Francisco is now proposing some barriers to a treatment, shelter. Homeless services will be, if the council agrees with the mayor, will be conditioned on them receiving treatment, whether it's mental health or drug addiction. People are getting smarter about realizing that if you legalize everything, decriminalize everything, you're just going to have chaos. We're seeing that right across the border. We saw that for a while here in Washington, growing, when we saw our drug laws and no man's land for a while. You know, the public conflates the issues. The issue is, it should be illegal. What you do with it is basically a sentencing or disposition issue, which is totally separate. And I think society has come a long way in offering, instead of incarceration, is offering treatment, rehabilitation, a way out of the predicament that they are finding themselves in. But you lose the leverage if you decriminalize everything. So we need to start putting law and order back in place, giving the tools to the sheriff and the local chiefs, the ability to enforce laws that our public demands and is entitled to. You know, we need health and safety. And this is a small step in kind of reclaiming the ground. We'll see what happens with Boise and whether the Supreme Court picks it up. But that's been a travesty and an impediment and vastly misunderstood by most of the Western states. And so that'll be an ongoing process that we'll have to watch. But be assured, we are doing our best for outreach, providing sources, providing bed space, whether sobering, detox, mental health, or just plain shelter or hotel vouchers. We're doing the best we can within the resources we have. We don't intend to just arrest people for sleeping and putting them in jail. We're not criminalizing homelessness. That's not the intent here. Thank you.
In addition to recognizing the long-term effort that has gone into the building of this ordinance, I think it would be missing a bet if we didn't acknowledge the incredible number of people who have been involved in the development of this ordinance. I was talking with my colleague the other day about that. And we stood there for a long time as he listed the people who have contributed. Could you review that? Because I think that gives the public a good idea of the support that is widespread for making this ordinance read right.
Thank you, Chair. We have had multiple meetings over the last six months. It's been a joint effort between facilities, because we talk about property, storing property, our Parks and Lands Division, who have had this ordinance in place in some capacity for a while. Of course, CCSO, our emergency management, our legal resources with the PA's office, and our health and safety, our safety coordinator for the county. Everybody that we could have at the table, we have had to be able to have this conversation. District Court with Community Court. I've been in conversations with Michael Torres with Community Services to make sure that we have the adequate pieces. And also the jail with the reentry services and how this interacts, if there's anything that's coming out of that area. So we've had a lot of partnership with many stakeholders at the table.
Maybe you mentioned law enforcement. I missed it. But they were there too, right?
Yes, very much so. Primary partner.
With that background, is there a motion?
Chair, I still have some comments. We could move forward with the motion if somebody wishes to, but I do have some more comments and questions.
Yes, we will move forward with a motion if there is one, and then we'll go back to comments as we always do.
I'll make a motion or approve it, but I don't have an ordinance number.
We have to go to a public hearing for this.
Okay, never mind.
This is just going over.
A thumbs up?
Thumbs up, yeah.
Do we not need a motion to take it to public hearing?
Don't believe we need a motion. I think just the, the thumbs up is fine.
Thumbs up, you say?
Yes.
Okay, here's one.
If, Counsel Young, if you don't mind, I just wanted to mention one thing before you had your comments. Just in response to your question, Chair, about, you know, what is this draft stat or draft code have to do with if there's other crimes that are committed, such as an unauthorized crime or fire in the parking structure or vandalism? This code specifically states that in all of these sections, that it mentions the RCW 10.31.100, which is the statute that states that if law enforcement has probable cause to arrest for any other crime, they can do that. So there is that language in each of these bullet points in the code indicate that if those crimes are committed and there is probable cause, that they can be dealt with at that time. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you so much. And Counsel Young, I believe I made a mistake. I thought we were going to vote whether or not to take it to hearing, but since we don't, you please go ahead with your questions and comments, and then we'll get the thumbs up.
So, thank you. Couple things. One is in definitions, it says available overnight shelter means staying overnight in an available shelter bed, a local safe stay community, such as one defined in VMC or a hotel stay provided by hotel vouchers. So I was kind of curious why we used, you know, Vancouver Municipal Code definition as opposed to not having our own and it kind of piggybacks on, my understanding is that the safe stay community is because they're funded with Vancouver levy dollars, that people who are experiencing homelessness in Clark County are not invited to stay there, are not able to stay there. So I'm just kind of curious how that happened.
So wanted to include in available overnight shelter, any safe stay communities, and I don't, it's just used as a definition, so it doesn't necessarily mean it has to be a local safe stay community under the VMC. That's just an example. So if the majority of the council wants to take that part of that definition out, we can certainly do that. We were just trying to give options of what available overnight shelter looks like.
It seems to, like, I get it, but it seems to me like, I mean, somebody shouldn't have to reference Vancouver Municipal Code to understand our code. But, I mean, that's my thought. I don't know what, I don't know. I'm not an expert on this, so I will defer to people who are. That's just one of the things that came to my mind.
If I could just quickly to, and I haven't been part of these discussions, so they can correct me, but I think it's probably referenced also because it's a local resource right next to our campus. So because it is regarding county campuses and because they have the safe stays that are adjacent to our buildings and stuff, that I think that's why it was referenced as an option.
Okay.
That's correct. And Counsel Young, just real quick on, on that piece, it, because this is our campus in our downtown area and we, we're going to be within a thousand feet of a safe stay location, right? And then the prioritization for the safe stays are the local area around it, right? So we wanted to make sure that, and that was the way I look at that. Leslie's given that from a definition standpoint, and that's right, it's just a referral of what that looks like. But there's a, going to be a joint effort down here because we are within a thousand feet of, of a safe stay location. So I know there'll be coordination. We talked about that a couple of weeks ago, when this was brought up about from between CCSO and VPD of what that's going to look like down here.
Great.
Well, if I could, I would just suggest you spell it out, Vancouver Municipal Code, rather than using VMC.
Thank you, Counselor Marshall. What we could do is we could either define it as Vancouver Municipal Code, or we could just take out the language, such as one defined in VMC, and just leave it at local safe stay community. Does the council have a preference?
Personally, I think that there should be, I, I wouldn't, I don't think we should just remove it. If we removed it, I think that we should put our own definition in there. But if it's, I mean, I guess it's, it's not a problem to reference VMC, then, I, I don't think we should remove it personally.
Yeah, I'd leave the reference and especially to take advantage of, if you will, the thousand-foot standoff, no camping, that comes with their code. And we could just replicate the definition unless we have some tweaks to it. I have no problem with Vancouver's definition. I think it could be ours.
And therefore, spelling out VMC is the approach that we're suggesting, counsel? I think I'm hearing three votes for that at least, and obviously yours, Counselor Marshall, makes four, so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And so I was curious also, so on page four at the bottom, "A violation of the provisions of Clark County Code shall be enforced as follows." And then A is prior to issuing any citation pursuant to this chapter, "The investigating deputy shall inquire whether the unlawful camping and storage of personal property is due to homelessness. If the deputy learns that such is the case, the deputy shall determine whether there is available overnight shelter to accommodate the individual." So I'm curious, what is the method? I mean, how are we, I mean, that's complicated to, to try to find out. There are so many different shelters available, and it's hard to know. There's nothing you can magically go to and find out, oh, yeah, there is one over at St. Paul's, there's a place, or, you know, something like that. So how did, how, how does this function?
Obviously, we're still, we're still in the, the draft phase, and working out the operational procedures is, is yet to be determined because we don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves here. But I can tell you that for patrol deputies who would be responding to these types of calls, the primary resource is the voucher system. Because we can literally track that through our dispatch. So just using a radio or a cellphone, we can call into dispatch, find out if there are available vouchers, and then determine whether or not that applies. And for the majority of time, there are vouchers available, so I think that that would be a very, as far as a primary way of determining whether or not this box would be checked, that would be the number one.
Okay. So I struggle with this a little bit because I don't think vouchers do much good. You know, it's, it is a, it's a, it's a Band-Aid unless it's coupled with, like, they're going to be in shelter until, or, I mean, they're going to, you know, have a voucher until there's a slot open for a more permanent temporary space, if you want to call it that. But, I mean, from my understanding, many people, when they're offered vouchers, they don't even do it because all it means is they move their possessions twice. You know, they move it to the hotel, they're there for a couple of days, they don't find any semi-permanent or permanent housing, and then they have to move again. So I guess I'm struggling with this one a little bit. I, I would want it to be much more heavily focused on, you know, a, a real temporary, more permanent solution than a hotel voucher.
And if I can address that, I, I don't disagree with you at all. I think there are a lot of people that, that see that as a Band-Aid, and in my experience, it is. It's used as a Band-Aid, it's used as a problem solver. But I think it also opens up doors for, for this population to start the process of accepting help. And in, in many scenarios, the first step towards receiving some sort of a more long-term care, long-term services, is getting out of the rain for one night, or, or not being scared of being victimized for one night. So I can also tell you that of the services that, that we have available to us as patrol deputies, this is by far the most used service, that, that, that overnight voucher. Because many of the people who would be receiving this are familiar with it, they've heard about it or utilized it. And again, it could be just that, that opening of the door that allows them to start down that path.
Okay. So I just urge caution and real, really working around the policy on when you determine that direction that you go. So and then I was also going to say, there, there's really kind of two issues, in my opinion, that we're, we're attempting to address with this ordinance. One is camping, but also is some of the effects of camping, which tends to be the collection of, of items and the public issue that that represents. And so looking at page five, when or when it will not be enforced, so it will not be enforced if there's no, again, no available shelter space for the individual engaging in otherwise prohibited camping conduct. But I still think that, do we have a policy around, well, maybe we'll continue to allow them to camp, but there are unlawfully stored items around the campsite? Do we have a policy or a way that we're going to try to remedy the collection of items issue?
If I, if I understand the question correctly, you're asking if, if we do not have shelter available, are we still going to try to take action upon this individual based off the collection of items?
Right.
I don't, I, I can't speak for, for what's going to happen in the day-to-day because, again, we're in the draft process of this. But I can tell you that I don't, I don't think that that solves any problems. And, and I can guarantee you that the deputies who would be enforcing this share that same opinion. The, the goal here is to not have to deal with the same camper every single day. So the only way we're going to do that is to get that person either services or resources that are going to create a long-term solution. So enforcing and taking someone's property from them is not a solution. So I don't, I don't see that as a workaround, but I see it as, as another avenue to ensure that people aren't just standing up and walking away from their campsite and leaving all of their possessions behind as an obstacle or a hindrance to the public that are trying to get in and out of this building to do business.
I may not have stated my, my, my thought quite exactly. Might. What I'm, what I'm trying to get at is there is, this, and this is a, this is a real hard issue, you know, because one person's trash is another person's treasure. But there is among that population, there is, there, there's many people that are experiencing mental illness and hoarding is an issue. And so my question is, you know, when, I would assume this is can, almost going to be entirely complaint-driven. So somebody calls, reports something, and then we, we, you know, we attempt to reach that individual, and we determine there's not a shelter space available, so we're not going to enforce and, and making them move. However, part of the complaint could be the collection of materials. And so I think we should have some sort of a policy in place to determine, you know, because we do want to, we don't want to upend their lives, but at the same time, we don't want to allow a public situation continue to grow, a problem with storage of, or, you know, contamination, biohazard, that type of thing. So I think that, I don't know if it needs to be in the ordinance, but we definitely need to have some sort of a, a policy that we have in place to address that, to try to minimize the items that are being stored on public property, at the same time as balancing the needs of those individuals. And then I was just curious, I was, I was curious, like, are, the community court, I'm aware of it, I've, I went to it one time, but is that a county function? Is that a city function? And are, are we able to bring people?
It's a county court, so it's district court that is that. It's a city and county collaboration.
Okay.
So that's been that from the very beginning. We, when I was involved in it way back when, it was started really because we didn't have an ordinance at the county, so it was truly a city function dealing with unlawful camping. So that is a city and county-driven process. So it's, it's aligned through both prosecuting attorney's office for the city and the county, and the court, district court handles misdemeanances for the city and the county, so that drives through that court.
Okay.
I would just say one thing about the policy real quick. The storage of properties is addressed in the policy, and our policy will be similar to our partners around, in the city, as well as other jurisdictions that we have collaborated with, so that we're in conjunction with the storage component of the, of people's, of folks' property.
And just, I'm sorry to continue this conversation, but like, how is that?
And Madam Chair, because this is getting ridiculous. Your ruminations are great, but they're so far afield from what we're trying to address with this and the storage policies and that the, that we are going to replicate with the city. You know, you're talking about the, our homeless action plan, continuum of care. You're talking about a lot of things that have nothing to do with law enforcement. And so we really need to move on.
Yeah, I respectfully disagree. There has to be coordinate, coordination with law enforcement when we're looking at private or property on public property. So thank you for discombobulating the conversation here. So again, thank you. That was the end of my questions. That was what I wanted to know, is the connection between the county and the city and what would, you know, the, the fact that we can cite in the county. So thank you.
And Counsel Young, is there any requests that you're asking staff to change on this ordinance that we like to? If so, I just want to make sure that we're representing the council.
I don't think there's any changes. I think it's, it's really just policy. And, and I was kind of curious, and this can be a different conversation since we want to move on, but how that, you know, because there's policy from the sheriff's office, there's policy from us, there's policy everywhere. So I'm kind of curious how that's going to evolve.
So after we go through the public hearing process for the ordinance, after we move on today and get the thumbs up from council on moving forward, we will still work with the same team to develop the policy for what our county. So we are working on developing what that's going to look like for storage, because that's, again, a joint effort. So if CCSO comes in, in contact with it, facilities is going to have to be involved. So that's always a joint effort between our teams, and that will continue with, with after the ordinance goes through the public hearing process.
I think this is a good time to, I'm sorry. I, I think this is a good time to actually get a thumbs up or not, as the council wishes, on moving the unlawful camping ordinance forward, and that would include taking it to public hearing. So if there is support for that, let's have a thumbs up.
So I'm supporting whole, with all my body, supporting moving forward. This is a work in progress. I want to address, we need to have our HMAS system.
Let's get a thumbs up or not, so we see where we're headed.
Thank you. You already saw my thumbs up, but we need to focus on the response so law enforcement can clear their call as quickly as possible.
It will move forward.
Madam Chair, please.
Very good. I am insistent on knowing the outcome of the thumbs up, and it is unanimous. So this will move forward. Now, go ahead, Counselor Midvige, with your comment.
Thank you. So the HMAS system is the one that should be a single-belly button for the law enforcement to tap into and push. The, there are stakeholders that have access to it, but it is a collection and a single source through the council for the homeless to find those bed spaces and find those vouchers. Additionally, where we need the work is at our wellness center, our triage center, all of our mental health providers out there, and we're making some progress in that, to identify every single bed for detox, for mental health care, temporary, tonight, and then hopefully have the continuum of care, care, provide a, a plan for each and every person. That's a work in progress, but that's where we need our emphasis, once we get this in place. But law enforcement, this is just, they're such a small role, but they're right on the road, and it's where we, you know, it's the first contact, and we, we need to. And it's where we, you know, it's the first contact, and we need to give them the tools to clarify things locally. So, thank you.
And now we move to the jail update. Item 2.3 under Old Business. David Shook.
Good morning, Chair and Council. David Shook, Director of Jail Services. We have some updates. For about nine months now, we've been coming in and talking about staffing, and I think we have some very exciting news about where we're at today. I wanted to let you know first that this has been a multi-department, all-hands approach, whether it was the communications team with Lee and Johnny, or HR with Keely and Leslie, or many other of our backgrounders, or investigators, or our recruitment team of dozens and dozens of people. We are to the point in nine months, we started off as 32 openings, we're ready to have a name with each of those openings. So I want to go through a couple of names for you, or a couple of different numbers to be able to share that excitement, because for at least nine months, I've been told we can't do more, we can't help out more without the staffing. So that's where we're at today. So as you've heard before, we've had 155 applicants going through our process over this last nine months compared to about 57 of last year. Of that, we've had many successful candidates. We have every position filled except five. So we have names attached to every one of those 32 positions, including our support staff, which actually just happened two days ago. So we had eight openings here just two weeks ago, and now we have names attached to each of those. We have actually some candidates interviewing next week, 16 of them, to fill the last five spots. So we've had some really great success with the testing process, localizing our efforts and taking it out of the internet space of testing online, stuff like that. And we couldn't do it without those other departments, because we can't be as efficient as a jail without those staff. Many of the things that can be accomplished is the mandatory overtime. I was talking to staff on Monday, and they actually started to say that we didn't experience mandatory overtime in their last works, which is an anomaly for the last nine months to a year. And so that will save us dollars, it will provide extra staffing to accomplish many of the things that we haven't been able to do. In fact, we're talking about first quarter of next year, being able to look at HPOD, adding 56 more beds to our overall jail facility and management of inmates, which I know talking with our law enforcement partners has been a critical need, is for more space. And so as we continue to look at and as we continue to hire, we are looking at how do we continue that effort to make sure that we have bodies or applicants ready to fill in as retirements come, as folks that move along, because maybe they didn't quite fit in with the kind of profession. We're working on those follow-up aspects currently. So just a couple of numbers for you. Our backgrounders, there's two of them, they did 85 backgrounds, and they have 20 more on their desk right now, and they have done an exemplary job of making sure that the right candidates are coming to our employment here at Clark County, so that they can make a difference. Again, with all of the newness of jail services, our facilities partners, our purchasing partners, making sure we're on track and following all the right rules and regulations for Clark County has been significantly important. And again, as we continue to be partners with our internal and external groups, we constantly have conversations on how we can improve things. And so one thing I wanted to add is about a month ago, we changed our booking process. And in that process, we opened up booking to a stint that has been more than six years. So we're adding more misdemeanors to our jail population, we're listening to our stakeholders out there. Many of the small chiefs have said that that opening and that changing of our booking policy has made a significant difference, where they have some arrestees who had 13 and 14 warrants that would not comply, they were able to bring them to jail and hold for our district court partners, and really taking impact in some of the community livability issues that they're experiencing. So again, 50% for some of those numbers increases over the last just month. Some of the different things that we're still working on are some of those security programs. We're about six weeks out from having them completely done, where that will not be an impact on the different things that are going. We currently have seven inmates over at Skamenee County, so that's helping out with different beds being opened up for our localized arrests. And again, that's been our focus for about nine months, is how can we localize our jails so that we can get in the local criminals and have the law enforcement be able to use all the tools that they can? In fact, I'll tell you, the very first arrest that happened after we opened up our booking was warned out of Camas for failed to register your vehicle for 45 days. And you think, well, what's important about that? Well, it's a tool, as you were talking about, the ordinance for camping, right, or how that works, it's a tool for the officers to use so that they can accomplish issues and things like that. And so anyways, as we continue to work on our staffing, those are the things that we're going to focus on. And my understanding from Joe and others that have been here for more than 20 years, that we have never been staffed for two decades this high. So it's an applause to the effort of the team, it's an applause for all the hands that have been a part of this critical component. And I look forward to what jail services can do for the entire law justice system, so.
And applause to you. Applause to the collaboration you've received. It's wonderful to hear. Excellent results. Would others on your staff like to speak?
Counsel, I just wanted to share that the staff from the other departments, not only have they been helpful, and the staff he was describing, they've actually been eager and enthusiastic to help us. It truly was amazing. And as the director indicated, mandatory overtime is decreasing, and in very short order, we're looking at opening up new beds. It was amazing with their help.
Well, for the last couple of years, I've been coming over to these meetings when I was the union president, or guild president, and now into the deputy director position. And the support of the county council, the county manager, deputy county manager has been amazing to get us where we're at today. I didn't think we would be there this fast. I thank you very much.
Great to hear. Amber, is there anything else for the jail update that you wish to add?
I would just like to add how, I know I boast often about how proud I am of this leadership team, of what they have done. I have went out with them many times to the community. I know, Councilor Marshall, we had talked about this in our conversation with Battleground. You know, we went out to the municipal court, talked to their law enforcement out there, the team made a significant change with the booking policy, and it changed their trajectory of what they're able to do. And that's what our job is, and that's what our intention and mission, as Director Shook said, is we wanted to localize and help our cities and our county, and we have, and the team has done that. So I couldn't be more proud and just grateful for all the hard work that the three of them have been doing these last nine months. They've seen tremendous progress. As we all know, in these jobs, it's really hard to change a culture and turn things around. And so what they have done in nine months, I think, has, is just been amazing. So thank you for the opportunity to add that praise to the team.
Chair? Oh, yes, and there is Councilor Marshall.
I just wanted to add a little more praise to all of this, so it's all remarkable. And I know I met with Mayor Johnson of Battleground just yesterday, and he was thankful and grateful again. I think there was someone that they had picked up 14 times, kept having to release him, except for this last time. So thanks so much for that. Your efforts are being noticed community-wide.
Picking up someone 14 times and now getting resolution must feel really good. Are there others from council who wish to speak?
So it is great to hear such great news, and certainly we've seen the emails and law justice updates as well. This has been a good transition. I mean, every time there's been a bump in the road, you've identified it, whether it came from Battleground or elsewhere, we're still working on some of them. But you've come up with solutions, great leadership, great hard work. Filling the ranks will increase safety and morale and reduce that overtime. It's just all good news. So from January, you know, back in January, we were hearing a lot of public pushback, oh, this all happened too fast, this is a secret, and, you know, you name it. And we got it from some of the candidates running for sheriff as well. But all in all, this has been a fairly smooth transition, and you're doing great work. And I think we're heading in the right direction when we get a remodel on the road and improve some of the facility, open up additional mods. I think we're just, you're doing great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other counselors?
Yes, so I just wanted to say thank you, and thank you for the little tidbit about the tentative opening up of the HPOD, because I am, unfortunately, I'm having to defend law enforcement all the time, you know, because people are like, gosh, they're not doing anything, they're not picking people up, and they just, people don't understand that it's a capacity issue, that there's no place to put them. So I'm really appreciative of that, so that this backlog will open up and we can start doing our job. So appreciate it.
And I think there's an opportunity, I was talking to communications yesterday, to share what this team has done. I believe that we're working on a website for recruiting, and it's getting close to going live. It's in a test mode right now. So when that happens, we're also going to do a press release, and we're also going to include information about the successes that this team has seen, so that the community can see directly and hear, if they're not listening to our council meetings, hear what we're doing and how this was a good move, so.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you very much for the jail update to all of you, and only to say again, thank you for the very good news. We turn to new business. Kathleen, October 25 meetings.
Okay. As I was looking at the agenda, including this item and the work session request, we are busy. We have a lot of stuff coming up. We already have a lot on the agenda, so we're going to need to talk about our scheduling between now and the end of the year, because we're running out of time, and we're double booking ourselves. So for specifically on October 25th meeting, that is a Wednesday, that is a board of health meeting, I believe, and council time. This is also the date of the Lackamasus Lake Symposium. I know Councilor Medveji will be providing remarks at that, but we have had at least two other counselors who would like to attend. It is an all-day event on that day, I believe it's 8:00 to 4:30. So my question for council is, do you want to cancel the council time and the board of health on the 25th, so that counselors can attend the Lackamasus Lake Symposium?
Do we have an alternate date that we could move it to instead, opposed to canceling it?
So that's going to be my question, because on the work session request, we have five today. I have two openings between now and the end of the year. Some of these are critical and they're time-sensitive, because the city of Camas and our staff have also collaborated on this, and Camas is willing the city staff to come over to have a special work session with council to also go over the draft lake management plan prior to the October 25th Symposium. But that, we're going to have to move things around. So right now, we have, like, fall supplemental work session is next week. We have the parks and lands draft capital plan. A lot of these have to happen before the budget. So these aren't, we have limited ability to move some of them. Fireworks, we can push that one out if council would like. We've got November 7th is open, I mean, for the next, before the 25th, I would have to push out fireworks probably. I'm not sure if I can push out the other ones. And some of these other ones too here, like the ACP and the tip on the work session request, that has to happen before budget. And that budget work session is November 15th, and that has to be ready well before that work session. So I'm open, we can, you know, some options, I can come back next week with some different options also for these work sessions, if we want to do two work sessions in the morning and council time in the afternoon. I could come up with a menu of options, but we're very tight for time.
I'm going to ask. I would like to ask something that is probably not a very good question. At the symposium, is it really necessary for our three counselors to be there all day? Or would there be an agenda that would be more conducive to their presence?
I'd be happy to answer that. This is Devin Rastefar for the record. Thank you, Chair, for the question. So right now, the agenda of the morning is, it's focused on the data and the science. And so Clark County will be presenting on, our division will be presenting on the Stream Health Report and our work in the watershed. The Department of Ecology will be presenting on their study that is scheduled to come out in December, December, sorry. We'll hear from the Lackamasus Watershed Council, who's been collecting samples in the lake. And then Camas and their consultant is planning to give an overview of the Camas Lakes Management Plan. And I know we had offered that we could have a separate work session to bring in Camas to talk directly about the lake management plan to you, but I would also offer that the symposium would be a good opportunity. And this agenda that you're seeing is being updated. So this is not the current schedule. I apologize if I don't want to cause any confusion. But the morning is really focusing on the results from the plan, and then the afternoon is focused on implementation and a call to action. So I would say, getting you up to speed on the data, priority is the morning. If you want to talk more about next steps in action, then the priority is the afternoon. But we're really flexible. Moving the symposium will be logistically challenging, but open to your thoughts.
And Devin, what do you mean by moving the symposium? Just, I'm sorry.
We've talked about, we think that counselor presence is very important, because the target audience from communicating with our commission and Camas is really focused on our decision-makers and those that have the greatest ability to make a difference in the watershed. So not just staff, but also those who are directing the staff. I think we've talked about a willingness to accommodate a change in the symposium date to accommodate your schedules, but we would need to take that to our commission, and I don't know what their reaction would be, and I would have to check with the city of Camas. So it would create some challenges, but I also acknowledge that the overlapping meeting is creating some challenges for your council.
There would be challenges, we know.
Either way.
So many people are involved.
Yes.
And I would add, and I would add as well, if we have three counselors that go to the symposium and that there is general direction being given, we have to actually have access to the public, provide access to them so that they can provide public input. So that is not just simply notifying on our weekly calendar of three counselors attending event, it would actually have to be like an official meeting. Just to keep in mind that you guys are discussing. Another option too, just as we're thinking about meeting dates, you know, we all meet on one-on-ones on Monday. It could be that we make those a little bit more concise, either doubling up or having them shorter, and then using the afternoon or the morning for other work sessions if we need it as well.
I just want to throw this out there. I'm hoping, in light of Devin's comments as well, because I think they're important, that every counselor will, at a minimum, want to have a work session where they're briefed, where we're briefed on what the lake management plan is. And that would be outside of this symposium date. I would just propose that it would be good for every counselor, if they're in support and interested, to at least pop in at some point during the day to show their presence. And obviously, when we actually dig into the lake management plan and have to approve any budget support or approve the plan, that we'll do that as a council. I wouldn't, I would urge us not to move the date for the symposium, because I think there's already been enough planning to go in to get all the stakeholders to be present there. So I'm hopeful we can work around it. I would like to spend as much time as I can that day, but I'm only one. You can still- You can still have, you know, quorum and conduct business here on all the other issues that we need to do. So I'm, I'm suggesting that we move forward with the same date, don't change it, and have a work session for the entire council at a different time in our normal course of business and, and that you just pop in at some point so we don't have a quorum issue. Something that'll be problematic as well, because it is a campaign topic for, for the city of Camas. There may be a lot, and this has been an ongoing topic by neighborhoods and on, on the blogs for quite some time. If we open it up to public comment, I think it, it can quickly get mired down into something we're hoping it's not.
And I appreciate that comment, but what I've heard from other counselors is not an interest in popping in, but an interest in really being a part of the symposium and knowing what's going on. And therefore, I'm really appreciative Kathleen of your Monday suggestion with adaptation of our one on ones. I think that could be accommodated, at least with the counselors and create a little bit of time, at least half a day and maybe more.
And I'll let Council Young go first because I have a, a suggestion. But go ahead, Council Young.
Yeah, thank you. So I was curious, so a few months ago, we approved some extra meeting dates if needed. Are those full?
We won't be using them because, as you know, our Tuesday meetings, we're also breaking records with a number of staff reports coming before council. So we're for the year.
Wanted to make sure, so that, that is exhausted at this point, so.
I will use that as a tentative because I haven't received all the information for the next, the added one. There's one, we added two. One was a placeholder, one is regular. We're moving forward with the regular. We'll look at the afternoon schedule, so there may be an opportunity there if we don't have a lot on there. But I'm encouraging departments to get their stuff in early and be flexible on the date so that we're not all in a meeting for eight hours on that. So, so maybe an option I can do, we'll still, we'll still go over the items and, and number five down here as well, the work session request. And then I, I'll work with Kristen, we'll look at calendars and I'll come back with next week with proposed dates outside of our normal times. Excuse me, whether it's the Monday or on the Tuesday afternoon or what, or other potential times and try to see if that works. So please make sure your calendars are up to date so that we can, Kristen can tell of something, if we can move other things around and if that works for council.
So then one more question real quick. So from my understanding from the OPMA, you know, and I don't know exactly what's happening at the symposium, but my understanding was that if no final action is being taken, that we don't have to require any public comment.
And this is something that I, I have on my radar and, because we will have our entire Clean Water Commission there as well. And we're inviting you as guests to attend. You are correct that we're not going to be voting or making any decisions, but rather brainstorming and presenting information. But if we do need to put out notifications or provide virtual options due to attendance, I think we're willing to accommodate, happy to follow up with Priya and others as well on what makes the most sense and how to manage going forward.
Yeah. So Devon, I would recommend that you touch base with the PA's office on this because there is a little squishiness, I think, on whether or not final direction. Because I think something that you said earlier, which is what prompted me to go, oh, we need to post this, was getting that direction or the implementation in the afternoon. So if you could please work with the PA's office, that would be great so that we can determine if it falls under that OPMA.
Chair, just a comment. I, I appreciate, I was hoping to attend the whole thing, so I appreciate the opportunity to be able to do that in juggling things around. And if there is a virtual opportunity, I, I, you know, and I don't know what the law is as far as the public, but if I were just a member of the public, I would want to be able to hear just the discussion and deliberations because it's all part of even if we're not giving direction or taking an action, just hearing our deliberations is part of that decision-making process. So that would be important for the public to have, be able to witness that somehow.
Very good. Well, and thank you Devon for chiming in because your comments were very helpful. Let's move on and because we're going to hear from Kathleen on the schedule and, and that will be definitive, I'm sure. Counselor reports are next and I would implore that they be brief. I will have none today. How about the rest of you?
None.
Okay, let's move to the work session requests. Kathleen, let's start with the first of five.
Yes, so this is a annual work session that happens with the council before the budget season. It's with Public Works and regarding the 2024 Annual Construction Program and the 2024-2029 Transportation Improvement Program. And the public hearing is scheduled for November 21st. This has to be done prior to our budget process. So it is an annual routine direction, giving, getting feedback so that we can move forward with the process.
That sounds like something that really can't be changed as far as dates. So do we have a thumbs up on that one?
Okay, thank you. The second one is the Fall 2023 Biannual Code Update. This is for community development. They're looking at different code revisions, revisions. Some of them are minor, some of them council has talked about that will be included, which includes the partnership on the noise ordinance with the sheriff's office, expanding the notice in the community for notice in that area. And then cottage code is also going to be included as well, some other potential like minor updates to the code. So this is just the work session to get, to present some information and obtain feedback from the council.
Silly question probably. Do we need to have a work session, given that we have talked about those topics already? Could we move it already to the next step? Or is a work session necessary? Kathleen?
The only piece that you may not have seen yet is if there were other minor code changes, corrections, clarifying and clear language that has not come before council. So there may be an opportunity that we can just bring those items that haven't been discussed and put it on the council time agenda.
That sounds great. And that would turn it from a lengthy work session to a shorter one, which sounds appealing.
Or another, or another option is, is we can do a 10 minute work session or a 15 minute work session because there's different.
Yeah.
We, well, I can, I can make it exist, yes. But I mean, and I'm not, yeah, there's different processes and things that we have to follow versus council time versus a work session. So it actually might be better if we can just squeeze it in as a 10 minute work session.
That sounds great to me.
I, I think that's a good question, whether or not we can actually do a 10 minute work session.
I'll remind you all. We'll be prepared to do 10 minute because I don't think we need to, I mean, it'll, like you said, it's already, a lot of the items you've already discussed and provided some initial directions. So it should be a quick summary on that and then any minor changes. Okay. I think I heard everybody was supportive of that as long as 10, maybe 15 minutes. Okay.
15.
Yeah, they asked for an hour. We'll get, we'll get it done in 15 minutes. We'll work with April and her team. Okay, the third work session. So this, it, I think we can accomplish this in one meeting, which is the legislative priorities meeting with our lobbyists and Jordan and the council. So having one work session to talk about the 2024 legislative priorities. A, a byproduct of that discussion is looking at legislative priorities that could impact the purview of the ECHO team, so homeless and, and others. And they are planning, they, the city of Vancouver has reached out to suggest that we include our lobbyists in the November ECHO meeting. And the city will be, and I think it's going to be extended to the rest of the cities. Just to talk about that and see if there's coordinated efforts on legislative priorities under that purview. And so having this work session prior to the November ECHO meeting would allow the council to discuss all of the legislative priorities. And then Council Belkot and Council Mevage can take the feedback from council on those that apply to ECHO.
I'm wondering if it might work for ECHO to meet and recommend their legis, if there are legislative issues related to homelessness, bring that back to the council because there may be some priorities that we on the council aren't aware of or, you know, how, it was just a, I get, which comes first, I guess.
And we might be able to do both. I mean, because we have to still talk about all of ours. And then based on, you know, that feedback, like I said, the two counselors can discuss at ECHO. And then based on that discussion, they can bring it back to council to see if that's something, if there's something new or change if our council's in agreement.
And then I know we were looking at meeting with our legislative delegation and it seems like that should inform our priorities as well, if there are particular things. You know, we need to inform them on what our priorities are, but I'd be interested in knowing if there are particular things they'll be working on.
So the whole reason for the order, I mean, it could be either way, but it was to add some structure and basically do our homework. So we had some substantive things to discuss at ECHO since the city kind of upped the ante a little bit by including the lobbyists for both the city and inviting the county. And, and I think we sorted through that or are in the process of whether or not that's going to impact our contract with our own. But, you know, it's an iterative process. I mean, each of us can be meeting with our local delegation, but we're hoping to organize that so we all meet with our legislative delegation and approaching the, the next session. You know, we'll, previously, we've had like 10, 20 different things that we would like to address. And then we had to kind of neck it down as to what are the council priorities? So, I mean, it's an ongoing dynamic process. It will be a sort legislative session. So it, the more structure and homework we can do ahead of time, the better. So I like the idea that Kathleen put together with this and I'm hoping that we can move forward with it. So we'll have a better ECHO meeting and, but be better informed generally with our own work session.
I think that sounds good.
During the legislative session, we had our Monday meetings to talk about legislation, which I'm assuming will continue. But I wonder, would it be reasonable for that to happen? This, rather than a work session to be a Monday set aside time?
So I think it's the same discussion. I think you're, you're saying, Council Marshall, that the first discussion, I'm calling it a work session, we're going to have to call it something because that has to be open to the public. We could do it on a Monday, but that, the work session is going to include our lobbyists and the council so that you can have that discussion. And then it will continue during the legislative process as it has in the past.
All right, I'm all for it.
Does that make sense? I want to make sure.
Yes, it does.
Okay. Okay. Not hearing any other feedback. Okay, so the fourth one, I did reach out or had a discussion with Steve Stewart from the city of Ridgfield, the city manager. And I think Council Mevage was the only one that was here during the prior discussion. It was regarding the I-5 West connection at 219th exit. There was a joint session, I believe, before the pandemic. I will find that and send it to you all just for your information. They are requesting to have a joint work session with the council before the end of the year with the Ridg, City Ridgfield Council to talk about this. I've also asked Steve if, if it's just going to be the same or similar presentation that was done before or if there's other options that are being considered to see if we can get that ahead of time so that council can see it before that discussion. So, and he did say he's hoping before the end of the year to have this work session scheduled.
I'm generally in favor of any meeting we can do with our partner cities because we need to continue to build communication links and personal relationships with other council members. So, I mean, even aside from this topic, I, I would like to do it. But, but this topic is relevant and there has been some constituent outreach on opposing views on what Richfield originally proposed. So I would like to do it.
Yeah, I, I would be supportive. I'm, I'm, I'm not sure about the need to do it before the end of the year, except that that's what they're hoping for. I could support that. And I think there are still alternative routes that are being considered. So it'd be good for the council to, to hear all of this.
I had the same input as Council Marshall and was wondering, is it budgetary reasons or what are their thoughts for the timing?
I'll, I'll follow up with him. I don't have the reason. I just asked him what timing that they're looking at and he said the end of the year. So I will follow up with Steve. Ken, are you trying to say, do you know about this?
Yeah, I, I could speak to that. Ten later, Public Works Director for the record. Council, the, the timing is likely due to the fact that because of our comp plan update and the changes to our transportation plans that would be incorporated in 2025, I believe the cities are trying to get all of their information and direction completed early in 2024. So that's probably what's generating the timeline.
Early 2024 would be too late.
That's when they would be putting their packages together and bringing them to us as far as tying them into the comp plan. So, you know.
I can, and I can still follow up with Steve Stewart and see if beginning of January would work for them as well.
So I would, I definitely am supportive of doing this. And, I mean, if it doesn't cause any harm to delay, then I'm okay with that. But if they need it, let's get it done.
I think I heard three at least. Okay. And then the one that was added, the sidewalks work session. Do you want a full work session or do you want to just an update on the program? I did go online and they, they do have a website in Public Works and, and I think recently it was brought up. So I know that they've been working on some updates to that program. What's your desire?
Because of the initial briefing and I, how long ago was that? I mean, at least we have three new counselors. I think Karen, you were here. I mean, it was such an enormous problem and it's only, and I'm just wondering, where are we now? And we've heard it in so many different contexts. Maybe we want as a policy decision and a funding decision to find some more money or different money and move it so we can accelerate the connections of our sidewalks and repair of uneven sidewalks and the improvement of the ramps, you name it. I, I just think we've heard it in the last couple of weeks, some come up and so many different topics that we really should take a, a look right now. Where are we? What's the plan? Have we made any progress? Maybe we want to put more emphasis to it.
Would that be part of the transportation plan and could be caught up with the comp plan update?
It certainly could be. And that would be, that would be something that council could decide if we want to incorporate it into our system plan. And, and Council Mevage, to your point, I know that there was prior discussion. I'm not familiar with it yet, but about a sidewalk infill program specifically. I don't think there were a lot of dollars that were assigned to it. But we can, we can certainly update council on, on all of that and, and look at options of what might be available.
Ken, is it a, a financial question or is it also labor available to do it?
Well, certainly, certainly both, Chair Bowerman. But I would also say there is a, there is a legal piece that's tied to this as far as the ownership of maintenance of sidewalks that comes into play. But really, when we're talking about infills and looking at prioritization as, as the, some of the other council, and you probably heard this before on the former presentation, it's just a very, very widespread, large issue around the county where these gaps exist. And addressing it with any kind of significance, I think, is what we need to look at and see what we could, we could make happen. look at and see what we could, we could make happen.
Well, unless it's too big of a topic to incorporate in with, with the tip discussion, that's a great idea. But if it's too big of a topic, it maybe needs to be pulled out and discussed separately.
And I would say for the tip discussion, we're pretty well locked in to our plan. We could, we can make additions. This would be a separate program from our, from our regular capital programs that you would see in our six-year program that we could, we could work. And I just want to also say, we, we do look at these opportunities regularly, so we have some school, not to go into the update now, but we do have several sidewalk programs that are underway right now, projects. And so it's not that nothing is being done, but I think there's, these additional issues that you're talking about do need to be addressed and looked at separately.
Quick question on just some of your comments there, like, is there like a reason, or is it just the fact that one process is farther along, that it wouldn't be considered a part of the tip? Why it's a separate project?
We have the, projects in the tip are already programmed pretty far along, I would say is the best way to describe that. And we are getting some time with council one-on-one, especially since I know some of our council members have not been exposed to our process of how we come up with the six-year program. So we'll be meeting with you and Kathleen shortly, soon this month, and we can, we can talk a little bit more about that. But we do have sidewalk projects that are part of the tip, they're already programmed, but looking for grants or making other funds available for, for some of these other infill projects that might not be high priority. That's what I think we're really talking about, we need to have a bigger discussion.
Sounds like it's worthy of a work session, but could it be put off to the new year? I would suggest that.
Kathleen, do you think you have what you need for scheduling at this point, or no?
I wasn't looking on the last one. Are people comfortable if we put it off to 2025, but we can incorporate it where we can in the tip and that discussion? Is that, is that okay with council? I have two yeses. I, Council Marshall, I've already got you. Okay, Chair, thank you. Thank you. Yes, that's all that I need, and I'll bring back her schedule next week. It's giving me, it's causing my heart to skip a little bit right now with the amount of, and you guys know, I mean, you're in these meetings too, but there's, there's a lot of work going on, and, which is good. We're doing, we're doing good work, but it's a lot.
It is a lot. And we just need to support each other and hang in there so that it can be done well. Okay, thank you. I think we're finished with that. Let's turn to policy issues.
I will just add one thing, as Jordan's coming up, we'll be having the safe park discussion next week. Vanessa just got back from vacation, so I was letting her get caught up this week. So it will be on your council time, just as a heads up for next week.
Jordan Bogie, for the record, council, going to keep this brief for you today, but just wanted to follow up on the lobbyists joining ECHO meeting. I did check our contract with them, and there is language in there that they will join pretty much any relevant meeting as, as needed. So, and I also had conversations with Josh Nanica, and they were both very supportive of joining. They'll probably join by video, but they're, they're committed to helping out the council as much as they can, so that's quite positive. And just in general, I will be having some more discussions with all of you about policy issues that we've been talking about in our one-on-ones, and what you'd like for me to share with council, and some of the things you'd like for me to keep a little bit closer in the coming weeks, so I'll have some more updates to come.
Are there questions for Jordan? That was indeed a short report, and thank you for that. You covered the highlight that is on the top of our minds, I think.
Want to request an update, if there is one, and it may be not from Jordan, but on the emergency ordinance we passed during the pandemic, suspending our ordinance on RVs.
Yeah, Jordan actually drafted the document for us, and it'll be before you, not October 3rd, but the next council meeting for consideration.
Thank you.
Okay. I believe that it is time to move on. We do have an executive session for 15 minutes that is scheduled, and thank you, Leslie, for informing us about that. It is regarding pending legislation, there, a pending matter. There will be no after-report or after-action on this item, 42.30.110, paren I, one, and then parentheses, little letter I. So let us take a recess at this point in time, go to executive session, and then, as always, we'll come back immediately for, after the 15 minutes, for council time in order to adjourn. And that would make it, it's 12:12, 12:22, shall we make it 12:25? Can we get done in that time, Leslie?
That's 13 minutes. I would suggest 12:30.
Okay, 12:30 it is. We'll see you back here then to close up during council time. So for now, councilors, see you in executive session. Thank you very much. It is Wednesday, September 27. Your Clark County Council has met in executive session, considered the matter before us. There is no after-action. So at this time, we are back into council time, simply for the purpose of adjournment. So this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Bye-bye.